So our last speaker today is going to be Dr. Jason McDermott from Pacific Northwest National Laboratory. Jason is one of my colleagues in our group, and he's going to talk to us about a couple of programs that he's been involved in, one that is focused on the pathogen side and one that's focused more on the host side, but where we've been working with some of the omics data to try to reconstruct regulatory networks from integrated data.
So thanks, Katrina, and I want to thank all of the excellent speakers we've had and the questions we've gotten from the audience. This is a great discussion, and I'd be happy to continue it with any of you after this. I also wanted to thank Bruno for leaving before I give my talk because I feel that he kind of built up my talk as something -- my talk is probably going to be a bit more pedestrian than what he had built it up. What I'm hoping to show you guys, so I'm talking about Systems Biology of Infectious Disease, and I'm going to cover a couple of different projects that Katrina and I are involved in, and kind of give an overview of a few selected studies that we've done in these projects, all linked together by a common theme, which is using network inference methods to be able to prioritize targets for further experimental investigation. So I'll start out with a little brief overview of what is systems biology. We've had this actually covered in the talks in various ways, but I'll just kind of outline it once briefly, talk about our approaches for network analysis and why we think these are good approaches, and then give some examples from the Salmonella and Yersinia pestis host pathogen interaction project, and then an influenza and SARS host response project, and finally, talk about some conclusions and some gaps in the current field that I see and some future directions. So first, Katrina and I are involved in a couple of different centers. These are centers that were established by the National Institute for Allergy and Infectious Disease about three and a half years ago. Elham is involved in a third one. The first one that I'll talk about is the Systems Biology of Interpathogens, which is headed out of Pacific Northwest National Lab by Josh Adkins. This deals with Salmonella and Yersinia pestis interaction with mouse macrophages. The second is headed out of University of Washington by Dr. Michael Kates, and this deals with influenza and SARS response of hosts to influenza and SARS infections. Third is the one that Elham talked about earlier, tuberculosis interaction with macrophages headed out of Boston University and Broad Institute. And the fourth is influenza and staph aureus, and that's headed out of the Seattle Biomedical Research Institute. These centers were established to characterize host pathogen interactions, as I've mentioned here, and to make publicly available data for host pathogen interactions. So some of that, a lot of that is through portals like Bruno was talking about, but we also have, each of these websites have direct links to our research and a lot of the publicly available data that we've generated already. And also, we've developed methods for investigating these interactions, both experimental and computational. So briefly go over this because I think Bruno really covered it in more detail than I did. Systems biology in general starts out with a hypothesis. Generally, it's a broad hypothesis that is kind of general, high level, leads to an experimental design and data generation. Again, as Bruno was mentioning, this is generally high throughput measurements of system under different conditions, and it may include things like transcriptomics, proteomics, metabolomics, ChIP-seq data that we've heard about, or other kinds of high throughput data, but it also involves other kinds of experimental data that can be integrated. When the data is available, it feeds to people like us where we do analysis and modeling, and modeling I'm using in a very general kind of sense, which is representation of the data to allow interpretation and prediction of further hypotheses. So predictions are made from these models. There's interpretation, and that's part of what I'll be talking about, where we have to take these predictions, which we get a lot from these, we take a lot of data, we put it into sometimes very large models, and then we get a million and a half predictions out. How do we tell which of these predictions is most useful? That's actually where a lot of the art of this comes from. So interpretation being prioritization of targets and biological interpretation to derive further hypotheses. So I should notice that, note that this is not really a cycle here. What we're actually doing is we're generating a number of hypotheses that then are followed along. Some of these may generate further data that can be used to refine our models, but we hope that they will be interesting, and I'll talk about several of these. So just a very brief, I think, for this audience, background on biological networks. Several types of biological networks may be familiar to people. We've discussed, Elham talked about regulatory networks, so transcription factors actually binding to targets and affecting their expression levels, protein-protein interaction networks, which are physical binding. Christian talked about those biochemical reaction networks. These are enzymes being passed through, sorry, metabolites being passed through enzymes. And what I'll call association networks, a lot of people call these co-expression networks. We derive them using network inference methods, which is we take a large number of observations of a system using high throughput measurements, transcriptomics, proteomics, and we associate components, in this case genes or proteins, together based on similarities in their expression patterns. It's a very, it's a simplification, as most of you know, but that's kind of a general idea. The relationships that we derive from this kind of analysis could represent regulatory, functional, or physical interactions, combination of those. For the target prioritization methods that I'm going to talk about, we don't really care that much. We're not interested in investigating this. We're actually looking more like what Bruno was talking about at the overall information flow in the system, and we're trying to use that to our advantage. So this is really an abstract representation of the system and its states. So what is this good for? Well, one thing is it generates a lot of pretty pictures, which are usually included as, you know, figure six, figure seven, somewhere in the paper. Yes, we have a network. We've generated a lot of data. I'm certainly guilty of that myself. Another thing we can do is analyze these using topology. So this is work that's been done by a number of different people. Mark Gerstein's lab, a few years ago, published a study which really nicely summarized it, I think, looking at yeast-protein-protein interaction networks. And what they found is that in the yeast-protein-protein interaction network, which is very well characterized, they could analyze the topology to identify hubs, either highly central, highly connected nodes in the network, proteins in the network, or bottlenecks, proteins with high betweenness. That would be like these that link different regions of the network, kind of like a bridge linking two parts of a city, so information has to flow through that point. What they found is that these proteins were significantly enriched in proteins known to be lethal when they were deleted. And so this means that we can use a topological approach, which is fairly unsupervised, to tell us which might be more important components of the system. Now, this is really nice work, and it requires that you have a fairly well-developed protein-protein interaction network. It's been replicated in a couple of studies using the human protein-protein interaction network, and we've done some of this work. But I'm going to talk in a minute about the extension of this to inferred networks for target prioritization. So first, talking about some results from the Systems Biology of Interpathogens project. Our collaborator, Fred Heffron at Oregon Health Sciences University, identified 14 regulators, transcriptional regulators in Salmonella that were essential in virulence. So if you knock them out, Salmonella is unable to establish a productive infection, systemic infection, in its host. We knocked those out, or he knocked those out, did transcriptomics under in vitro conditions, under four different in vitro conditions that mimic virulence conditions. And so we generated a dataset of about 60 different observations of the system. Our question was whether we could take this network approach that was developed or was really tested in protein-protein interaction networks and extend it to a very general inferred network. Again, we're not looking specifically just at regulatory interactions in our inference. We're looking at kind of general co-expression or co-expression linkages. So this is a network that we got out from our Salmonella. This is a portion of the network that we got out from the Salmonella analysis, and we did the topological identification of bottlenecks and hubs, and then we needed some way to assess whether or not the bottlenecks were doing any better than the rest of the network. This turns out to be something for Salmonella because it's a bacteria. They've done negative genetic screens where they have inserted transposons randomly into the genome and then seen what has a significant effect on virulence in mice, and they can basically sequence on the other side and find the genes that didn't have an effect on virulence. So when we take this group of virulence-associated genes and combine them, we can see that actually our bottlenecks are significantly enriched in genes that are known to be essential in virulence. So this is a nice demonstration that we can take high throughput data, we can infer networks, which is, in a way, a lot easier than generating a whole protein-protein interaction network, especially for organisms like Salmonella where we don't have that already. And then we can prioritize targets using topology, and I should note that these prioritized targets are different, distinct subset than the, just the differentially expressed genes from this analysis. So this is a nice complementary way of looking at target prioritization. We published this a few years back in Journal Computational Biology. We replicated it in macrophages, so looking again at a large-scale dataset where cultured macrophages have been treated with various immune, innate immune stimulants or adjuvants, toll-like receptor agonists, as well as infected with Salmonella. This is about 170 different observations of the system. We inferred networks. Again, this is one of the networks we inferred. We identified bottlenecks and hubs, and in this case, we used a different set. We can't use the same list. We can't use a lethality list like the yeast-protein-protein interaction network. And so what we did is we said, well, what are the questions we're asking? We're interested in finding things that pathogens might be specifically interested in targeting. So pathogens in general have to manipulate the host cell network, and one of the ways that they do this is by actually physically interacting with proteins in the host cell network and modulating their environment so that they can persist and survive and replicate inside the host. And so actually, work that was partly done by Bruno, they had identified a large list of proteins known to be targets of pathogens in a large number of pathogens. So we used this list to say, now we can take a look and see if this prioritization method is actually giving us something that we'd be interested in following up on, and indeed it was. So bottlenecks, in particular in this study, were significantly enriched in these proteins that were known to be targeted by pathogens, and so the idea here is that they're more important because the pathogen needs to be controlling them. So they may be control points for innate immunity or other processes. And like I said, I'm going at very high level, kind of giving you the soundbite version of this, so if you have questions about this after, please come and see me. So the final project that I'll talk about in the Salmonella side is basically looking at a combination of two approaches. And the first is this inference-based approach where we took transcriptomics and proteomics, and we inferred networks and prioritized targets. The other portion of the Systems Biology of Interpathogens project modeling component is actually run by Bernard Paulson doing metabolic reconstructions. So they've generated a metabolic reconstruction for Salmonella typhomirium, and they can do simulations on this. And so I took this list of bottlenecks that I identified, and I passed it along to Daniel Heiduk and Bernard Paulson's group, who then plugged it into his metabolic model using Cobra Toolbox and got predicted phenotypes out. So the bottlenecks that were more likely to alter the, predicted to alter the metabolic and growth, sorry, the growth properties of Salmonella were then sent on to our biological collaborator, who's actually validated a number of these. Now, this is work in progress, we don't have any final results up here. This is a nice place where we're taking kind of the bottom-up and top-down approaches that are represented by the two approaches here, as Bruno was talking about, and kind of merging them together, at least in a very, in a very straightforward way, but to get better predictions of what might be going on with our bottlenecks. Because one of the disadvantages with this network-based approach is that you can lose some of the functional information about what these might actually be doing, and you'll see that in the next study where we've tried to do that a little bit. So I'm going to switch gears to host response to respiratory viruses. This is a systems virology contract, and we're interested in studying and comparing influenza, high pathogenicity avian flu H5N1, as well as H1N1, the seasonal variety, and the SARS coronavirus in terms of both human cells and mouse model of infection. So I'm going to, in this section, talk about a single study that we have, that we've been working on and is close to publication right now. Actually, I was putting some finishing touches on it this morning. So an overview, and we got a nice overview of the replication cycle of influenza from Christian earlier. We're interested in what are the causes of pathogenesis in respiratory viruses. These are very important in terms of human health. The pandemic in 1918 killed as many as 100 million people, which is a significant number, and if you think about something like that happening today, it's a very frightening thought. People have put a lot of effort into trying to understand why these viruses kill and what makes the difference between a benign seasonal flu virus and a highly pathogenic virus. Some of the differences are very small. And surprisingly, a lot is known about why people and animals die, but not the causes of what's driving that, because they see the end points, but not necessarily what's upstream and why the virus is actually manipulating this process. So our goal was to identify and prioritize potential mediators of pathogenesis that are common and unique to influenza and SARS, and I've got more on the approach here. So our overall approach is to do infections with highly pathogenic Vietnam 1203 in a mouse model, the SARS mouse-adapted coronavirus in the same mouse model. We followed this infection over a time course and over several different dosages for each virus, so we have a large number of observations of the system. We did transcriptional analysis as well as proteomic analysis. I'm going to be talking about the transcriptional analysis for this particular study. We're also generating some metabolomics data, which has not quite been analyzed yet. We use network inference approaches to identify hubs and bottlenecks as our prioritized targets. These are kind of boiled down to hubs that are common between influenza and SARS and common between, common bottlenecks between influenza and SARS. We also have a unique set, which I'm not going to be talking about, for each virus. And this is further filtered to get a target gene list using a variety of criteria, not the least of which is availability of knockout mouse models. So our contract did not want to be in the business of going and taking our, you know, top five and making mouse models, which can take a long time, be very difficult. So what we did is we basically triaged to see what was available. Now, this is something where then we can take those mice and infect them, the knockouts. Again, to get an idea of whether or not our prediction, which is it will have some effect on pathogenesis, is true, we measure pathogenesis using a variety of measures. The one that I'll mainly be talking about is weight loss. So if the virus is more pathogenic in the background, the mice will lose weight faster. If it's less pathogenic, it will lose, they'll lose weight slower. We also did transcriptional analysis of these knockout infections to validate our model. So this is the network that we got out for the SARS coronavirus. You don't need to take much from this, except that these are very modular kinds of networks, and these, a lot of times, these modules have functions that can be, or groups of functions that can be ascribed to them. The hubs tend to be central to these modules. The bottlenecks tend to be linking modules, so kind of controlling the information flow between the modules. We identified a number of targets. Our collaborators in Wisconsin and North Carolina, both went to work validating these, so doing the infections and getting the transcriptomic data. And so what are our hypotheses? And this is where I mentioned before that we have very general hypothesis. So if we knock out one of these bottlenecks, it will have an effect on pathogenesis. So the very, this side, you know, one possible outcome is that we don't see any change in pathogenesis. We don't see an altered, this is a true negative. We basically missed something. On this side, we see increased survival, which comes with an accompanied altered network. We also have the case where we can see increased susceptibility to the pathogenesis, and that would also be a positive outcome. The network is altered. We have another possibility for a negative outcome, and that is that we get negative as far as our pathogenic outcome readout, but we actually see changes in the network. Now, I'm not going to really discuss our results here, but we've actually have several examples where we don't really see any change in weight loss or morbidity of the mice, but we see a fairly significantly altered transcriptome. So the idea here is that we might just be missing something. One of the things that we're looking at is whether or not these are important in aged mice versus young mice. So for influenza and SARS, both age plays a very important component in susceptibility to virus. So one of the things that our collaborators right now are doing with some of these knockouts are aging the mice to see if we can see the phenotype. So phenotype might be there, it might just be hidden by us not looking in the right, in the right spot. So this is an overview of the pathogenesis results that we got from our targets. How you read this is a zero means no weight loss change relative to wild type. So the, if the bar is at zero, we didn't see any significant change. If the bar is positive, we see a reduction in the amount of weight loss, and so the knockout is causing a protective effect. If the bar is negative, then we see an increase in susceptibility, and the weight loss is increased. So we have two matched pairs of knockout mice. IDO1, which is a tryptophan enzyme, and the tryptophan pathway. It's also an interferon-induced gene that has some known effects on immunity. And TNF-alpha receptor 2, we've assayed these both with the H5N1 infection and with SARS infection, and what we see is a very similar kind of effect, which is not a huge effect, statistically significant increase in weight loss with both of these in both viruses. So it's interesting because in SARS, we've actually followed this up. So TNFR2 has a counterpart, TNFR1, and it's, in some cases, somewhat redundant receptor for TNF-alpha, and we also knocked that out and found that it had approximately the similar effect. If you knock out both, you get a much more protective effect. So it's saying that these, knocking out the TNF-alpha receptors, the two main TNF-alpha receptors, is actually causing less pathogenesis in the mice. And this actually fits with some things that are known about high pathogenicity viruses, where the virus can actually be completely cleared from the body, but pathogenesis continues on because the virus has activated the host immune response, and the idea is, is that it may be dysregulating itself and basically the host ends up killing itself. It's a, it's something that's debated quite a bit in pathogenicity circles, but that's one idea of what might be happening here. So one of the other really interesting examples here is this KEPI. KEPI is an inhibitor of protein phosphate, phosphatase 1. No previously established role in innate immunity or immunity of any kind or response to virus. We picked this out. Our collaborators were excited. They said, hey, this one has no, no known role in immunity, let's go test it. And lo and behold, it produces, knocking it out, produces a more susceptible mouse, so we actually get increased pathogenesis, which indicates that KEPI is actually playing a protective role in SARS infection. Now, we didn't do the corresponding knockout in the Vietnam 1203 because it's already downregulated. Vietnam 1203 has a much faster course of pathogenesis than SARS, and so one of the ideas is that this KEPI and through its action, protein phosphate, phosphatase 1, may be playing a different role in the Vietnam, or maybe playing the same role in the Vietnam 1203 infection as it is in the SARS infection, and now we've just uncovered this, because now this mouse looks a lot closer to what we see in the influenza, in the influenza mouse. And it's interesting because I'm not showing the data for the network validation, which is, we were actually able to validate our network for most of these knockouts. It's basically showing that the knockout affected the gene's neighborhood in the initial model. And we can do some other analysis with the transcriptomic data, and one of the things that we've done with KEPI is shown that it, above all these other ones, has, seems to show profile, an expression profile, which matches a lot of different kinds of dendritic cells and T-cells, showing that there may be dysregulated or differentially regulated infiltration of immune cells or development or activation of those immune cells. So it's a nice hypothesis that has come out of this to kind of be further investigated. So this is really a nice study in that we've actually taken a very directed approach to hypothesis, data generation, model building, predictions, interpretation, and then back to further hypotheses and further data generation that is now feeding back to refine this, our initial models. A pretty exciting project, actually. So I basically covered this. We have shown identification of pathogenesis and virulence genes, depending on the project you're talking about. Also provided some interesting biological insights, some that has made our biological collaborators say, wow, that's really interesting, I wouldn't have thought of that before, which is nice. As a computational side person, you always want to have that kind of effect on, rather than the confused look that you get a lot from biologists. We've generated hypotheses for further investigation. A number of these are actually under investigation in the different labs that we're working with right now, and we've developed some novel computational approaches, a lot of which I haven't talked about, but the network approaches to target identification, I definitely have. So some data integration that Bruno alluded to, we definitely have this problem. We've definitely got ways of working with it. I didn't really talk about it in this, in this talk. And really, a lot of what has come out of this is the integration of computational modeling with biological investigation, which leads into my next slide, just talking about the gaps. So where do we see things that might need to work on in future? Well, one of these things that has really come over the last three and a half years of working on both these projects is an improvement in communication, and this is definitely the kind of communication where sitting down across the table from someone who's on the biology side, and I'm on the modeling side, and we talk back and forth for hours at a time. When that happens, we see a huge improvement. So really, we want to further improve this, education and communication between what I'll call modelers in general and biologists, people doing the actual experiments. So we need modelers who understand the biology at least enough to understand what kinds of questions are important to the biologists, and we need biologists who understand modeling at least to the point that they can kind of get what kinds of questions can be asked, because a lot of times, that's the problem. You sit down with a biologist and you say, well, what do you want to do? And they say, well, what can you do? And you say, well, what do you want to do? And you say, what can you do? And, you know, back and forth and back and forth. So you have to break that, break that stalemate. We really want to do more rigorous examination of target selection methods. We've kind of shown that we can do fairly well at picking out high priority targets and validating them, but what we haven't shown is that what if we take the bottom 10% of our predictions? Are those negative? Those really negative? And it's very, very difficult to convince biological collaborators and their IRB boards that you want to take a bunch of knockout mice that you believe won't have any effect and then do infections and actually go through the pain of actually suiting up in these BSL3 facilities and 3+ facilities and doing all these experiments, and you're telling me you want to get a negative outcome? Yeah, it's a little bit of a tough sell, so I think we're going to have to work on that one. We're going to develop network approaches that are predictive, both qualitatively and quantitatively, and I think we have some different interesting ways of looking at that. Elham had some qualitative, quantitative predictions. Better integration of other data types into these methods and better methods and approaches for target validation. So I just want to finally thank all the people that have been involved in these projects is the Systems Biology of Interpathogens, Josh Adkins at PNNL being the PI, a number of other people at PNNL all contributing to this, Oregon Health Sciences University, Fred Heffron leading the Salmonella side, University of Texas Vladimir Moten doing the Yersinia pestis, UCSD Bernard Paulson doing the genome scale modeling, along with Daniel Heiduk, who I represented a lot of his work, or some of his work in that slide, and JCVI doing the transcriptomics with Scott Peterson. slide. And, uh, JCVI doing the transcriptomics, um, with Scott Peterson. For the Systems Virology, um, we have Michael Kates, the PI at University of Washington, Yoshi Kawahoka, the, um, influenza at, um, University of Wisconsin, Ralph Baric at University of North Carolina. So finally, uh, I just wanted to, um, thank everybody for their attention and, and everybody's participation in this session. And I'll open it up to any questions and discussion that people have. No questions? I get away that easy?
(inaudible)
Oh, good.
I have a quick question. Um, when you see these bottlenecks and hopes differentially expressed, I suppose some could be a reaction of the host against the infection and the others could be manipulated by the pathogen. Is there any way of distinguishing them just based on the expression data?
That's difficult. I would say, based on the expression data alone, probably not. Based on some other kinds of data, like the kind that Christian was, uh, talking about? So where you're actually doing assays and determining what's actually bound to in the host, what's actually targeted in the host? That's another way where you can basically say, now we see this change. We see this bottleneck that is, you know, predicted to be very important, and it's also a target, a known target of one of these, um, viral proteins. I think that's where we could actually make some more, um, progress. The other way is by using different kinds of viral mutants. So basically, if you knock out, uh, a gene, do we see the same, uh, same set? We haven't, really haven't done that, uh, yet, but I think that's actually an interesting idea. Thanks.
Thank you very much for organizing the session and for, I particularly applaud your next to last slide about, uh, biologists who understand modeling and vice versa. That's very important. Uh, I have a question regarding, uh, pathogenicity and the modeling thereof within a system slash network approach. So pathogenicity is extremely contextual. Certain genes that might be considered pathogenic or are labeled as pathogenic, uh, may not be. Uh, iron sequestration is like a great, great example. Only pathogenic if you're intercellular or otherwise. Who cares? So, um, I guess my question is, before we fall into the deep hole of ontologizing everything and taking that as the gospel, as has been done in current systems biology and really plagues current system biology, how would you see we, um, avoid, are you taking steps to avoid that particular thing? How would you avoid this in, um, in host microbe interaction systems biology, as it were, which is a nascent field and we have not yet made the mistakes, I hope?
Yeah, so the, the mistake being taking predictions of this kind that may be very general or very, very contextual and labeling them as pathogenic.
Correct. Or, or vice versa. Label, mislabeling, identifying something which it is not because we are not the biologists that understand modeling, but rather the models that think they understand biology.
Yeah. That's a difficult question. Um, I, I think that in, with specific, with specific problems, you can look, um, I mean, this is, this is a, a big problem. We deal with this. So we see things like in these knockout mice, well, cell proliferation, cell cycle is dysregulated. Is that pathogenesis? Or, I mean, is that the kind of question that you're, you're talking about?
That could be, for example, something that is pathogenicity. That is a pathogenicity. If a cell cycle is dysregulated due to the presence of microbiota, but they could be, you know, but you could not see it or consider it pathogenicity because all you see in terms of your system model are a bunch of commensals. Only the commensals aren't that great for you.
Yeah.
And then comes the non-pathogenicity, but not that great for you, like, for example, the, uh, rise of firmicutes in obese people that, um, that, that was identified. So, you know, it's a disease state and it's obviously correlated and to some extent facilitated by microbes. Is that pathogenicity? Things like that, basically.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm cutting it too fine. So let's stick with pathogenicity itself. Contextual based pathogenicity and, and, I don't know, the iron sequestration when we say, things like that.
Right.
You know, is, is some, are some steps being taken care to, to, because this will be a huge thing. Otherwise, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll end up with
I think there's some
A bunch of hairball figures.
Yeah, for, for, um, in bacterial pathogenesis, anyway, there's, there's a lot of work in identifying the things that are essential for virulence. But this is again contextual because it's usually with the caveat that it is systemic infection or, um, or some other kind of infection. Um, so you, I think you still have that, a bit of that problem. But if you can basically focus on the things that are essential for virulence, at least you've defined, here's the group of things that when I remove them, this bug is no longer , um, virulent. Of course, if you remove a lot of genes in Salmonella, you're not going to get a virulent bug because your bug's going to be dead. But, um, you know, trying to, trying to suss those out, it's a, it's a good question. Um, I'm not sure that I've answered your question fully, and I'd actually be interested in discussing it with you a little bit more.
It's more of a topic point and a kind of, uh, you know, because this is now starting and I'm really happy, because this is what I'm doing and I'm really happy this is starting and finally coming to the forefront at, at ISMB, Systems Biology of Host Microbe Interactions. I sort of stated that a little bit as a warning and because your work is really broad reaching and everything, I was curious as to how you're handling it because that's kind of a little bit of problem that I'm wrestling with.
Yeah, I don't know that we're handling it yet.
(laughing) Do you have any biochips? Uh, no, I'm, uh, I'm actually dealing with gut commensals.
But they go the same warning from, from, uh, the CS aspect with, if, uh, if things are wrong.
I, I admit I wasn't here for the, for, for, uh, the first talk. I only came in during Bruno's, uh, during Bruno's talk. Sorry.
But it's, it is, it is a big issue.
Yeah.
Don't focus on what's at the beginning. Pathogenicity, yeah.
Is a large, yeah.
Problem.
But that's a quick comment. I, I think, uh, what it kind of, what kind of revolution, what it kind of, uh, a policy you want to bring into the modeling. So if you have each immediate phenotype, it's got to be great. But without that, it will be the, the, what we got.
We've got a couple of other studies where we're looking more like, uh, so this study was not designed to look at, uh, variations in pathogenicity, for instance. Some of that has come out, but we're actually now, uh, have a number of other studies that were in, uh, experiments that we're including where we look at the gradation of, of, um, pathogenicity to say, you know, all the way from not very pathogenic to highly pathogenic and, and some shades in between. But
Yeah. I'll make one comment along those lines. You know, when we started the program and we started talking to the research scientists about how they define pathogenesis, you know, they had their high path and their low path and they had their weight loss phenotypes.
True, actually.
But when we told them we needed a quantitative index of pathogenicity, we were met with complete silence. And, you know, because all the different model systems you use for studying these viruses really don't effectively replicate human disease, we can only get as close as, as we can come up with the right kind of, of measurements. So, you know, instead of just doing weight loss, now we're starting to look at lung function and, and, you know, cellular infiltrates into the lung and that sort of thing. But again, there are other model systems for, um, viruses such as influenza, like the ferret that actually sneezes and coughs like humans do. And, you know, if we had a really great ferret genome, perhaps we could approach that problem. But, you know, there's that balance there between can we really replicate the human disease and the pathogenesis in the animal model and have an animal model that's effective enough for us to actually be able to do the kind of data collection and modeling that we'd want to do.
And that's a good point as to, I didn't elaborate on it, with the false negatives, where you, basically, we don't see any change in pathogenesis. It's like, we'd see an altered, uh, a network in transcriptional sense. Um, it might just be that we're not using the right metric. And this is one of the things that was, was a little bit surprising to us, uh, you know, when Katrina asked that question and the biologists were kind of like, don't have an answer for you. And it's very complicated and there was lots and lots of discussion about this and that and the other thing. And, yeah, it's
Yeah. Quantitative sort of prism for a loop sometimes.
Yeah.
I, I have two hopefully really quick questions. Um, my first question is, as far as, um, your research is concerned, is there a reason why, um, a 3D cell culture to do proof of concept for the negatives is, is not an option?
That's actually a, a good point. We have, um, we thought about that on another project, not with the negatives idea, but I, I think that's something we're, we're going to go to. We have a, a standard cell culture system, which we can definitely, we have looked at, actually. We haven't done that.
Yeah. Are you talking about like an air-liquid interface kind of line?
Well, I'm talking about like a rotating wall reactor that you can actually, you know, really put in a 37C, 95% O2, 5% CO2 system and, you know, look at it in a, in a physiologically relevant way.
That's a, that's a great idea. And the, and the barrier to that is that, um, SARS and influenza, H5N1 influenza are BSL3 plus.
3+, right.
And so getting any of the equipment in there, they have limited equipment in these, in these facilities that they can do. But, yeah, something like that would be
So, you know, my understanding is that there really is not a great three-dimensional lung structure kind of culture model.
That is true. The, the intestinal
Air liquid surfactant kind of interface. So, um, yeah, I mean, we haven't pursued that simply because it would be another model system for us to repeat a lot of the exposures. Um, one of the things that Jason didn't really mention, um, he did, uh, talk about the data being available. Um, I mean, we're working with data sets that have full-time courses, full-dose responses, multiple, um, like viral mutants to give the different pathogenesis phenotypes and, um, human cells versus mouse infections and knockout mice. So there's a lot of experimental data that's been generated already. Um, and so we're trying to figure out with our next set of experiments, what's the biggest bang for it, um, instead of just another sort of culture system to confirm what we already know.
It's, oh, I don't, I don't have it on this slide.
My second question is actually a follow-up to that. Can you give sort of a brief, like, bullet point, and maybe this is a better offline discussion or, or not, of what a biologist can do to educate themselves in the most efficient way to then come and have a conversation with someone like you all?
That's a good question. Um, I, I don't know that there's
As a person trying to do that, I, I
Yeah. So, so I would, I would recommend, um, that you look, PLOS Computational Biology has a tutorial or primer series, and they, there's a link on their website that has a lot of these. They give very nice succinct, um, overviews of different approaches that are being taken. So at least you can say, oh, they're using a Bayesian networks approach. At least I know kind of what that is. Maybe not what it'll give me, maybe not, you know, all the ins and outs, but that's why you're not doing computational biology in way.
And consulting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Even more, all right.
Hi. I actually have a question that's related to the context we were talking about earlier. And, um, basically in bacteria and in eukaryotes, um, your genetic background will obviously mean a lot. And I was wondering if you had compared several Salmonella strains, for example, and was there the same scheme, you know, the same bottleneck, the same
I see. Genetic, uh, so we do have some data from Salmonella typhi, which is, uh, very host-adapted to humans. Um, and we haven't looked at it that way yet. And part of the reason is we haven't generated as much data, um, for Salmonella typhi that would allow us to do that yet.
So having several strains that are distinct from each other.
Several strains. Yeah, it's a really, it's a really good point, actually, to see.
And the same for the mice. I mean, your negatives could actually be just the, the strain of mice to use.
That is, that, that's a huge issue. And one of the ways that, um, we're not directly in, involved in this, but the center is involved with the Collaborative Cross, um, studied, you know, the, are you familiar with Collaborative Cross, where they've taken eight founder strains and done a very sophisticated breeding program to get, you know, they're going to get a bunch of, uh, strains. But, uh, they've actually done infections with influenza and SARS of the pre-CC population. So like a hundred and some mice, just to kind of get an idea. And they see a wide range of pathogenesis.
Right, right. So I guess my follow-up question is more, from a modeler perspective, perspective, uh, what can you do to basically, um, well, look at the consistency of your model and see how it's going to hold, um, in that context?
That's a very good question.
So I think in that case, they're planning to integrate, um, the, the genome-wide association results from the Collaborative Cross, um, experiments with some of the same kind of transcriptome. Um, and even what they have to do in that case, I believe RNA-seq, because each founder strain has a different genetic background, to actually map the reads on to. So they have to create sort of personalized mouse genomes to be able to analyze their RNA-seq data. Uh, but in the process, they plan to integrate the genome-wide association maps for highly sensitive and highly resistant strains and look for, you know, some of these overlaps in these response modules to see which of the genetic back markers are actually responsible.
In, in terms of these kinds of studies with inbred mice and you're looking at one mouse strain and, and that's it, that's a very good question. I don't think there is a real good answer for it.
Um, the comment actually is, um, does the current study, what about, uh, where published by ERCEP group, uh, you would, you know, with the work in, um, base, fact, fact, papers. So, uh, basically that were the segregation population of, of mice. So you, you got, you got a different gener, the, the, for instance, but it was population size of, was 380 mice. And based, um, genotyping alone, it could not get the, uh, to make the causing factor of, uh, I think they were looking for obesity. So then it actually, I don't know.
As part of the circle was mentioning, there is also the genetics. I mean, there are definitely a lot of things that are
And, and another one of the, to, to get a good head on the, uh, in genes.
So, so we're also, um, I'm also working with, um, some TCGA data, which is human data, and it's not infectious disease, it's cancer, um, where we actually do have multiple levels of omics data in genetic backgrounds that are different. But we haven't yet started to apply these methods rigorously in that background. That will, that won't address your, your question exactly, except that you could imagine where you could start generating, um, networks or models based on very small subsets and then seeing how well, which, do hubs work really well? Do bottlenecks work really well at extending out into a, a real population or?
Exactly. How can we apply probability measure to networks?
So, so there is, there is some suggestion and from a number of different studies that a lot of times these bottlenecks and hubs, we've done these studies for the bottlenecks and hubs in these CoExpress networks are actually more evolutionarily concerned, conserved, um, which might address some of that. Of course, it doesn't get at variance and, and things like that. I, I'm, I'm excited to look at this in the cancer arena where we do have things like SNPs and to see if a bottleneck's enriched in SNPs, you know, things are, bottleneck's enriched in cancer-related SNPs, rather. Um, things like that. But, yeah, that's a completely open question.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah.
Just a very quick question. Is there anyone at PNNL working on, uh, interactome at metabolite level, like chemical level?
Uh, interactome of metabol-
Let's discuss that offline now. Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Thanks to everyone for sticking around.
Thank you. Sticking it out. Wow.